So, okay, why don't we start over? We will call our meeting to order at 6:55. Thanks, Dean, Jan, for getting us under high-pressure situation. Seems like we're alive and ready to go. Okay, agenda review. We are removing the parent survey. Is there any other agenda review items? I don't think so. All right, move on to our public may address the board. Anyone on the public that would like to address the board?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
My hand in the back.
You know, I usually come with a cup. Anywhere I need to stand in particular. Becky French, eighteen, we're laying, fourth grade teacher. So, I sent a letter to the board, but I just wanted to mention this in this forum for other people that I would strongly encourage the board when we're posting our, what is currently a French position, to post that instead as a foreign language position. We did a lot of work, I don't know how many years ago, maybe eight or so years ago, on the foreign language program. And what it talked about was the importance of the quality of the program, and in particular, the quality of the instructor. And it was very explicitly said, it doesn't matter what the language is. And that's part of what just made me feel comfortable going Spanish in Hanover and French here, is the language doesn't matter. They actually even proposed some ideas like, you do French one year and Spanish the next. You can do half a year of one. The idea is getting the kids learning a language. And I think, nothing against French. It could be any language. We just want to cast the biggest net we can to get the absolute best teacher that we can. And my sense is there are more Spanish teachers around than there are French. And so, I just, for the sake of the program, where quality of instruction is going to be the most important thing, I think we want to get on a path where that is our focus. And so, I would encourage that we send the broadest net and that we advertise for a foreign language position. There was some concern expressed to me that the public got very upset about changes to the French program. And I really think we talked about, when there were people upset about cutting time and all that. We were talking about the French program because that's what we had. But I think you could have replaced foreign language program. I really don't think the people that were advocating for more time needed it to be French. They just wanted a quality program. And again, they were looking back at that work we did and saying, this is how much time it should get. They were going to that study and saying, this is what the best program is. And again, that study said the language doesn't matter, the quality of instruction does. So, I would just encourage you to consider that when posting your position. Teachers are in a shortage enough without narrowing ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. French. Great. Thank you for those comments. All right, any other public? Anyone online?
Got a couple people online, but nobody with a raise.
Okay, no hands raised. All right, we'll move on to the PTO report. Not sure if we're getting one tonight.
Jamie's on.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Join?
No, Jamie.
Oh, Jamie Join, okay. Yeah, I don't think our PTO...
PTO's busy out there, or was.
Okay, that's right, they were right up there. Okay, that is fine. Business prior discussion, we'll move on now to our reading of our policies. The first one is the second reading of our sustainability policy. And the other one is the annual review of our, I believe this is the investment policy. Guessing there's probably limited discussion on these. We've reviewed the sustainability one a few times now, and then other ones, annual adoption.
And assuming Chair, no changes to sustainability policy since we saw last time?
I'm not aware.
We separate out the definitions after the first reading identified.
And these will be moving to, into our business action for approval tonight, so. Okay, that's easy. Are any other discussions on this? All right. Our committee assignments are posted here. We did meet as the four chairs a couple weeks ago. And you can see, I think this is the link to the Google. This is actually an Excel link. Yeah, this is the hard Excel link. But anyways, it's in the Google Doc. I'm not sure if anyone, I mean, feel free to change your committees if you feel that something's not there. I think we tried to kind of take everyone's committees for what they were in balance in them somewhat. Jan, you had requested a couple of things, I think, for like, policy, we figured you seemed like you're busy enough with what we had assigned. That was okay?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. And then, yeah, I think you're probably on every committee again. We really did try to split off. Obviously, you've got some new board members over in Hanover, including another one as well. So, once Ken's, that's position settled up, we'll be reviewing this one more, one more time. And then, by the way, I think the purple, that actually had relevance to, I'm totally forgetting what it was now. Oh, that was actually, that's going to be active during the next year, so we can try and make, be careful to highlight really which ones were some of the negotiation committees in particular. Hardly, you know, should not have any activity this year. Okay, on that one, we were going to talk about the PTO liaison, just because that is one that is a little bit tricky. It's not really a committee per se. And then, it does cause issues sometimes when a board member's at the PTO meeting, and if you have too many board members there, then you have a quorum. We were talking about it for chairs, and we were thinking that it might actually be better to, if the PTO president, and maybe Sean, if you want to relate us to, if you see the president, if they would like a board member to attend, let us know that month. And at our meeting, we can have someone definitely be ready to attend. But I think unless someone really wants to, I think board members are just so busy, frankly, with these evening meetings and the daytime meetings, it was just, it's hard. And I think Lily was graciously good at it, and she had the time to go to that meeting. But I was hitting around, and it was really challenging with all of the other committees, Sean.
I wonder if you would consider just doing a whole written thing?
Yeah.
If they could review it, because they do appreciate having a board member.
Okay.
Maybe if you just did, like, top five bullet points, then I'd think a lot of it.
Garrett, I'm willing to do that, because they all have way more committees than I do. And I can just, like, email it to everybody in advance, and you can tell me if I missed something. Or you can just, and I don't mind doing that.
Okay, great, thank you for that. Okay.
But I can't go to the meeting.
Right. And if that, if that's not working, what we all, my other thought was is maybe we could go like, once every few, like, once every third meeting or something like that, this term in school year, or show up every other meeting or something. One of us could definitely do that. Okay. But I think, Sean, like I said, I'll email the, who's the president? I'm sorry. Like, put you on the spot now, too.
Oscar.
Yeah.
Leah, that's right. I can send her a note, because she sent me a couple updates and just let her know that. And like I said, and I'm happy to, if she emails me, I said I'd really like some of that, one of these meetings. I'll, I can delay it ten minutes as well. Okay, any other discussion on the committee assignments? Once, twice. All right, on to, right, my stress apart reading, the Ed funding update. Neil had sent out that update. We've gotten a couple, well, actually, we haven't really received too much from representatives, which just makes me a little bit nervous, but then this kind of, and you said, you want to?
Nope, I'm going to turn it over to Jay, because he's got more current information than I do.
Sure, I can kick it off, and we already, we have the existing documentation already attached. Yeah, I feel like our reps have done a nice job of engaging us, lead up to a lot of the fast and furious action that's happening right now. But last Thursday, I attended a VSA meeting, which is the first one I can remember in a long time, where we had, I think, almost every superintendent in attendance. And we had a presentation from Zoe Saunders, our Secretary of Education, and then leadership from various committees, including Ways and Means, Finance, Finance, and the Ed Committee, both the House and the Senate committees. And I kept, in each other, in each of their discussions, the concept of consolidation was prominent, and they were talking about like, how many districts. And so, obviously, the governor's proposal, we shrink down to five districts. And then, in the House Ed Committee, there's a number, and then the Senate, they're kind of agnostic about that piece of it. Certainly talked about consolidation, but ultimately, actually, we had the President pro temp in the Senate, too. And he assured us that no, no changes immediately. We can kind of take a deep breath. This is going to take a couple of years to get this fully figured out and implemented. But everybody else was pretty certain. The numbers ranged from, from the low of five to a high of fifteen. But everybody said it's something like that. So, as they discussed it, more five seemed to be much more of an unlikely outcome. But, but the number got up to about nine for the bottom, and fifteen for the top. And so, there is a big push to do some real consolidation. As it stands right now, there are exceptions for the two interstate districts, Austin-Rivendell, which is really interesting, because that, that, nobody seems inclined to talk about that much. But we, we have actually engaged legal counsel through the Dresden School District to monitor the evolution of this legislation and to look at it through the lens of Dresden, keeping in mind the enabling legislation that led to the Interstate School District, which has a provision at the very end that says that neither state shall pass legislation that harms residents of either state. So, that's the lens we're looking at it through, but ultimately, the implications are big, just when you think of consolidation. The discussion about funding is, we're still looking at a foundation formula. Then, no one can give us any hard numbers, but it doesn't seem promising. Is probably the best way I could summarize it, in terms of the, the foundation itself and then the various modifications that happen along similar lines to those that have already been developed in a weighted student funding approach. There are some adjustments that can be made, but they don't seem to benefit a district like ours. It, it, it seems highly probable that we're going to be facing some serious funding challenges when all of this, when all the dust settles and the legislation's fully focused. I mean, we could spend a lot of time speculating on the likelihood of any of this stuff passing, but it seems that since we have both, well, everybody, our Democrats, our progressives, and our Republicans in the legislature, it seems like something is going to happen. It's going to be substantial.
Yeah.
I wish I could be clear.
Yeah, I can add a little bit more to that, maybe. So, I do know, so the bill, the House bill that's under consideration that has this, this transformation of this H454, passed out of House Ed, as you mentioned last week, and is currently sitting, at least as of today, in House Ways and Means, where they're spending some time looking at the funding piece, is the funding formula stuff. And I know in the last couple of days, there have been some presentations from the Joint Fiscal Office around what would a potential, what, what could a formula look like that allowed for spending above that base amount in a foundation formula? And so, I know that they were entertaining some various scenarios there, in addition to what an excess spending penalty would look like with a foundation formula. The thing that I think we need to keep in mind in Norwich is that when you start talking about a foundation formula, you're talking about basically a set amount of dollars that's given to every school in the state, set amount of dollars per kid. When you're a school district that currently spends little, not, you know, a trivial amount, but a lower amount than some other districts, then that foundation formula is likely to impact you less. When you spend a lot per student, that foundation formula change is likely to impact you more. And we are on the higher end of things. So, I'm looking at the latest numbers from last year. Norwich ranks fifth in budgets per long-term weighted ADM kid and third in education spending per long-term weighted ADM. So, either metric, we are towards the top. We spend more per student than the vast majority of any other school in the state of Vermont, which means that, you know, whatever, it is highly likely that the switch to a foundation formula will negatively impact our budget in this school.
I would tag on that the provisions in 454 that also address class size, district size. And those, those items have been tossed around. There was a, there was a provision that they were looking at, class size of twelve for kindergarten, and then moving up to fifteen, I believe, for up through grade, up through grade four, and then like, jumping it up to like, twenty or twenty-five even, depending on who prevails in that discussion. So, those will be, those will be changes as well. And there are provisions that you can seek exemption from that if you have a small school by necessity, is the term they're using, versus a small school by choice. And so, there'll be provisions ultimately in the law where you have to make the case that you are small by necessity in order to, to get an exemption from those.
Good question. In these conversations, is there any discussion around like, alternative funding sources for Vermont, such as changing how we tax second home owners or creating a marijuana tax or something like that? I'm not stating I'm for or against any of those things. I'm just curious. I know that other states have done things like that. I was just wondering, are they even thinking about revenue in a creative way?
I am not in tune with all of the latest discussions. I do know that last year and years past, there had been discussion about potentially moving to an income-based model for funding education. That didn't really get a whole lot of traction. I haven't so far heard a lot of talk about changing the source of education funding in the session. But it doesn't mean that maybe those conversations aren't happening. I'm just not familiar with them. But all of the discussion around moving to a foundation formula, that was all property tax-based. I know that for certain, so. And to be clear, right, so the education fund receives several different sources of revenue. Property taxes are only one of them. Hundred percent of sales and use tax, there's portion of rooms and meals, all of the lottery revenue. So, there are a lot of different sources of revenue. It's just that, yeah, the one that, it's the property tax one that gets really attention most.
And what's interesting is, we got a letter from our reps that said that the, there's actually a surplus right now. We'll need to do a one-time adjustment for all of this. So, kind of also mind bending, we're like, we have a big problem here, but there's a surplus that they might apply as one time to buy down the tax rate.
Yes, so that was one of the governor's positions coming in, sort of loosely tied, I think, to his educational reform plan. And that was buying down the tax rate, this year's tax rate with surplus money, because basically, he didn't, he didn't want much of a property tax rate increase. And so, even though, you know, I would argue, school boards and school districts all across the state came in very lean this year, conservative in their spending, which resulted in, I think, only about a three percent, on average, property tax rate increase forecast. He wanted that even lower. And so, unfortunately, my, my, when I say unfortunately, I believe House Ways and Means passed the yield bill that used, I think, close to $120 million to buy down the tax rate for this year, to get it closer to like, I think, a whole one percent increase. But for anybody that follows this stuff, I think that was a bad idea, because it potentially sets you up for a very large cliff the next year. And with all of the changes that we're talking about, possibly moving to a foundation formula, and the fact that Norwich, I think, would be, you know, on the outer end of being adversely impacted by this, it just could make a bad situation even worse for us, based on what they did. That's not final, right? It still needs to go through all of the Senate process and then get through reconciliation. But right now, I, I, I wish they hadn't passed that out of Ways and Means, but that's where we stand right now.
Just so we know, I believe both Jim and Rebecca voted no on this. I did ask them by email. I said, I was kind of taking Neil's position, because they're asking for our opinion. And Rebecca then said that we agree that this buy-down, it might save taxes today, but it seems kind of short-sighted. And I think as a board member, we had approved budgets, and everyone believes that, you know, increases that everyone can project is better. It sounds like I was actually reading the email from Jim back, that the day before they voted the yield bill, they discussed putting half of the surplus into reserve fund for future use. My question was, can you, as a government, can you store this money, right? Because I think there's a tab you have to spend with, right? Like, I was kind of, it was more a government question. So, he said, that still would have bought down taxes, but not as much. We would have still had a healthy sum for next year. Jim said, that would have been a far more sensible choice, but it didn't get, sounds like, based on Neil's comment, that basically they decided I could just go for it. So, I guess we can all be happy this year that we'll buy cars and then we can all save taxes for the tariff set. It does sound like, I think, just one more comment on this. I mean, reading the bill, I sent this to, you know, it sounds like the committee has been now reformed with a capital C, which was the committee that was formed last year. It's going to be looking into all of these details, right?
Yeah, so, the, the bill proposes that, so, there was a committee that was enacted by law last year to take a look at education reform in Vermont. They spent some time, you know, over the course of that year, trying to come up with some recommendations. Ultimately, we're unable to get a set of recommendations really to bring forward. The body still exists in statute. And so, what they, what 454 does is use that existing commission, so the Commission on the Future of Public Education in Vermont, and adds to it now a subcommittee whose task is to take a look at this consolid, this district consolidation aspect of things and to come back with a recommendation.
And just district consolidation or everything like foundation funding?
Right now, as I read the bill, my understanding is that it's only focused on the consolidation piece of it.
Okay, but taking some of your things, it sounds like where they're looking at really detailed.
Really detailed.
I have some, there's some.
It's requiring three options regenerated this morning.
I did notice there's stuff in there as well, construction, which is kind of interesting. I was, many, many pages written on that. Yeah, all right. I think we can probably rumor it along.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to clarify, Neil, you were, when talking about per pupil spending, you said, I think you said, weighted, the weighted, so are per pupil spending, when you say it's on the high end, that is not our actual money spent per student? That's once it's adjusted for what type of students we have? Like, when they're looking at it, I know the state for funding, they are looking at the new weighted students. So, that ranking of per pupil is based on two things, how much we actually spend on our students and what kinds of students are walking through the door? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
To be clear, it's based on the ADM, which is the weighted ADM, right? So, we're only getting credit for some of our students. We're not getting, no, right, we get credit for all of our students.
There's no extra credit.
Some, some students are worth more than others.
Right, yeah.
Right. But I mean, some students cost more.
The per pupil number is based on the weighted, right? We're right, that eight-twenty, so last year's number was eight-twenty-eight point eight nine, right? So, that's in the...
So, our per pupil spending could go up without us actually spending more per pupil if the type of student who walks the door changes?
That is absolutely right.
I will say, we, I felt a little bad for Zoe Saunders, when she came in, because the superintendent, once we warmed up and started asking questions, she was very much on the defensive. But at one point, someone asked a pretty poignant question about how can we, because, because all this is predicated on bringing greater equity and improved student outcomes. And so, when we, we asked multiple questions about, so how can we promise improved student outcomes while we're cutting and consolidating? The response was, hopefully, there's some miracle solution that pops up. I made sure I copied that quote, because, I'm near the end, so we are.
She's losing it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the challenge, right? You look strictly at the governor's proposal, and just to be clear, like, the governor's proposal is no longer the one that's being moved through the, through the House. Yeah, there wasn't, I don't know that there was any sort of evidence-based, you know, projections done on that model to indicate that it actually would have saved money other than just strictly through consolidation and basically carrying back on the workforce.
On that note, thank you, Neil. I was ending on a high note, of course. Any other discussion on this item? We will have a regular update, I think. I mean, I think we'll probably keep it on so much, I mean, so between now and, is there a lot of activity now? Or are we kind of like?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, there will, so, essentially, what's going on right now is you've got a bill in the House, you've got a bill in the Senate, right?
Yeah.
At some point, they'll flop, right? But if I had to guess, I think what's likely to happen is that the majority of this work is going to end up in a committee of conference at the end of the legislative session. And, you know, fortunately, this, the way that this structure works, like, that's probably when it's going to get all figured out. And the thing that's unfortunate about that is that at that point, things happen fast. And I won't say that there's no transparency, because there's, like, you can watch these things on YouTube, but it happens so fast that there's not a whole lot of time that if you're trying to, you know, reach out to a rep or get people to, you know, advocate for a certain position, the time is gone by the time you're able to rally people together to, you know, advocate. So, I would argue, I think we want to make this a standing item on every meeting going forward. I think the next meeting, we probably ought to have Rebecca and Jim, if not, also our senators to join us, just so that when, you know, that eleventh hour comes and there's some horse trading going on as to what's in and what's out, at least our reps know our position on this. And, and hopefully, that helps to influence how they might, you know, vote on any of the things.
Do you think, yeah, sorry, I was, I thought the committee that was going to basically be formed for the next year and then make this decision at the end of the year.
So, here's the challenge, right? So, if you look at the House, like, if the House bill were to pass in exactly the format that it is today, then yes, that is what happens, is that there will be a committee to study potential restructuring of the, of the district and the governance model. But just last week, the governor went very public, saying he will veto any bill that does not propose a change in the district, in the governance and district consolidation and a new funding formula this session.
Oh, okay.
So, he's, you know, he's, in my view, right, he's taking all the political capital that he's gained over the last several years, and he's throwing it all out there this session. And basically saying, you don't bring me something that shows true education reform, I'm going to veto it, and we're all getting back together to figure this out this session. So, there's going to be a lot of back and forth, I think, as we get, you know, into May and towards the end of June, as to how all of this plays out. And, and I don't, you know, I don't think anybody's got a crystal ball. I can't tell you what's going to happen, but I think something's going to happen. And, and that's when we just be able, we need to pay attention and, and be watched.
And when do we think the modeling takes place? Because that seems to be that, that was the big, in my mind, the shortfall of the three, of the waiting situations. People just failed to model it correctly, then you had a big, huge mess. I mean, at some point, I would assume that someone's going to model the foundation formula. And then, understand the impact that every single school gets to.
Yep, so, in one aspect, that work had already originally been done on the governor's plan. So, the governor's original plan had a foundation formula that was like thirteen thousand two hundred per student. And then, there was some ability to raise a little bit beyond that, and then some of the student weights played into that as well. They issued an initial spreadsheet that showed what the impact would be on school districts, and that's the information I brought forward to this board a while back. Like, we would have been short on several thousand dollars per student, right? So, in that formula, things are not looking good. House Ways and Means right now is waiting on a report from Tammy Colby, who was previously one of the authors of the waiting study from, from Act 127, on what a more reasonable foundation formula would look like. And so, that I was anticipating getting any day now for House Ways and Means to review and consider. And so, that, at that point, I think we'll start to have some numbers that we could, you know, model and run. You know, model and, and run scenarios here and say, you know, what would the impact?
Do the foundation formulas, do they ever change based on like. Areas? I mean, you can't pay the same amount for, I mean, I know you have waits for kids, right? Based on a, um. Sorry, um. Whatever it is, one forty six, but. Today, a tire or teacher in the city of Burlington or down here in the upper valley is different than hiring someone up in. You know, this kingdom, right? Or is that not?
Yeah, I don't, um. I don't know. Uh. I mean, you're right. There is some cost differential based on just geography, right? And, and where we're all located. And our communities. Um, but I will say in every sort of foundation formula that I have seen previously there, that has not been taken into consideration. Doesn't mean that it can't be, but.
Most, most foundation formulas, sorry to keep going on here, allow for. That's the foundation and for tasks to make their own decision on top of this. And because of our. Supreme Court case. Vermont would be a different foundation formula.
Well, you can have the foundation formula. And I think the question at the table, what we talked about before was, so what provisions might they allow in statute to allow you to spend more than that? And that was the excess spending penalty stuff that I was talking about before. They were running different scenarios in House Ways and Means this week as to how, you know. What would it look like if we were to allow that? Like, how, how could that be built? How could it be structured? How would it work? And.
Okay. I'm not sure if it survived, but there was a, a chunk of the governor's proposal that talked about. Equity of teacher pay. And they're talking about raising. Teacher pay where it's low to equal, I guess it won't exactly equalize, but to. But there was a substantial increase. So we asked several questions about that. Like, how does that work when the purpose of this whole thing is to reduce costs? And I, I guess they're, they're. Anticipating greater savings from consolidation and part, partially could be used to pay some teachers more.
Yeah. You highlight the fact that I'm not convinced that it was. Uh, it was a very sweeping reform plan and I'm not sure that all of the details were fully, um. Considered and fleshed out and all of that. Um. So.
Miracles.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I think that's enough. Um. We, we can get spot. Are there any other questions from anyone else in the room on this? Yeah.
Man, I agree with you though. Just pay attention.
Okay. Uh, I'll, I have a note here to reach out to Rebecca and Jim for our next meeting with the, I'll see if they can make it. Okay. Um, see parents survey results. We're going to move to the next thing. Are, we have a donation. Um, children's book fund. Do we have anyone that would like to? Speak to this? You have a place to read it? Sean, would you like to, do you have a quick call up to this?
This is an annual donation that comes our way. Um, to support children's books and the idea at our school. I think it's based on some sort of. To the population.
Weighted.
It's weighted, unweighted. But somehow they came up with five hundred and seventy seven dollars.
Yeah.
That's great.
All right. Well, every little bit else. So thank you very much. It's great to know. Um, any questions on that?
One of us.
Look, I'll just reiterate that this is a grant from the Vermont Community Foundation. That was one of the requests they had for. Public announcements. So.
Oh, great. Okay. We're going to thank, thank the Vermont Community Foundation very much for that. It's, uh, it's, it's very helpful. Um, we'll move on to our next item, which is the substitute nurse pay. I think Robin, you're discussing this.
Yes. We have been, I've been meeting with the nurses since COVID and now I meet with them monthly as part of our K through twelve meetings. And over the past few years, we've been talking about nurse pay, the impact that. Not being able to get nurses in the schools has on. The principals and the assistant principals and everyone in the school. And so we. Talked about increasing our nurse pay from a hundred and seventy five dollars per day, which is what it is now to. About three hundred dollars per day, which would bring us more in line with the hospitals. Near us. And, um, so what I put together for you was just some overall information about. What nurses are paid in other areas. I gave you some information about what other school districts are paying. Up to usually about two hundred and fifty dollars. And I gave you the, the list of those school districts. I also provided the funding for nurses at DHMC. This was from the website. The nurses told me. In their experience, some have worked at DHMC. They said it's much higher than that. And we could provide nursing through a private company called Dedicated Nursing Associates. I looked into that. But that is extremely expensive as well. For registered nurse, we would pay seventy two dollars per hour. So we are recommending just increasing our nurse pay up to about three hundred dollars per hour. We think that will provide us with more competition in terms of getting nurses and. Um, I'll just give you some recent examples. We had our nurse at the middle school. She brought someone in. They were going to be trained. She asked how much the pay was per day. And when she found out, she said, no, I can't do that because. She, her income is so much higher doing her per diem pay at the hospital. So you can see I did include some quotes just from the nurses and from our principals because. Our principals and assistant principals seem to take on that task to a large degree when we can't get nurse substitutes. And I know substitutes overall across the district. It's a difficult thing. But, um, but they're dealing with some extreme situations. So. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And I know that Jamie and Jay can both speak to this as well.
So I guess the, are we, are we approving? This, is this impacted the budget? Can we approve it? I mean, if we just, I assume we all just say, yeah, this sounds great. Does it? Where would this come? I mean.
We don't have an action item.
Okay.
Because this is the first time we've brought it to you, we thought the board probably wanted a chance to. Think about this. We'll discuss this at each of the boards.
Yeah.
And then, and then, uh, but it's. We'd love the board's like. Thoughts on it, given the situation.
How many, you have asked for like, how many days this might? Cause basically we're, we're talking roughly what? One hundred and twenty five dollars extra per day. So like depending on how many days.
Jamie is waving her hands.
Jamie, would you like to, uh?
Yeah, I did a little research because I figured you might have some questions. Um, and. So what I did was I went for, for Marion Cross. You only have one staffer, uh, that this affects. And so I went back out and I looked at historically, just through last year, how many days. Um, between professional development and or sick time and or, um, personal time, right? People can have, you know, fifteen days of sick. They can have, I think, three personal days, I think. I can't remember. I'm sorry. And, uh, I think it's three to five, um. For professional development. So if we raise it from one seventy five to three hundred. The difference, including tax, between the two would be about a hundred and thirty five dollars a day. However, so that would be, uh, twenty six hundred, twenty five dollars. However, that assumes that we've been having substitutes, you know, fill the open positions. I don't think that's been the case many times. So if you want to know what the total impact to the budget would be. At a three hundred dollar a day with taxes, which would be three hundred and twenty three. For approximately twenty days, if you were to cover twenty days at that rate, it would be about sixty three hundred dollars.
Okay. I mean, my perspective on this is, um. There's, can we, where do we find money to do something like this? And I also would, I, I'd love to understand how working the about regular subs as well. I was here yesterday or Monday meeting with Craig. And Greg was doing a million things. I happened to bump into a very beloved sixth grade teacher of mine who lives near me. Anyway, she was here for half the day because nobody else could cover for her and she had to get like drugs later that day to go home. So. I feel like we, we need to find a way to do this. I would love for us to find a way to fund it, take care of our staff. Um, as much as we can. I also think there's a lot of people not working right now and we would have more sense if we raised the, the price. I think of some. Parents in the school district who don't have work, who would probably be willing to sub if they could get paid more. That's just my.
You address that, you know, to us here, we, to raise the sub pay, you just, we just can't raise. Put this over in Dresden or is the sub pay? That, that's not historically brought to the board for more action. So we can raise the sub pay without doing, I thought there was a problem with that. We were talking about raising the sub pay, but then we ran into a bit of a roadblock with regards to their agreements or something. The subs can get paid wherever they want.
So when we had this discussion, our concern was that, uh, we were talking about sub rates for head assistants. So we, we didn't want to raise the sub rate. In a way that, um, made our subs earning higher than our actual employees. And, um, there was some minimum wage considerations too, the Vermont area's minimum wage. That was.
We just raised the rates of our.
But to be clear, tonight we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly. Okay.
One consideration for subs versus regular employees is regular employees get benefits and substitutes do not. So like now that I am a contract worker myself. You, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking. You know, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about, but I think it's possible that a sub might get paid more per hour because they have to fund other things.
Uh, so Jamie, I think. So Jamie, I, just to address Jason, I would put a pin in that as the next budget season. Maybe we, when we're doing the line items for subs and stuff, we can. Look into more of the sub pay. Since we just approved budget for this past year. Yes, Jamie?
Yeah, just keep in mind, you know, from a financial standpoint. When an employee's out, you're paying that employee's wage, plus you're paying the substitute's wage. Right? And so we looked at the numbers of sick days, in fact, during negotiations at one point, and they're substantial. So if you're going to update or raise your substitute, regular substitute pay. It, it's going to be a substantial number if you're going to try to fill every single vacancy. But I mean, with your nursing sub pay, you have a, that's a, that's a smaller number, right? Because you're not backfilling multiple people. You're only backfilling a one position. So like your, your exposure or your maximum cost on backfilling that one position. At this rate is, you know, that's finite, right? It's not like twenty nine FTEs times twenty days available. Or a hundred, if they have a hundred sick days banked or whatever that is. That's a much bigger number than the number that this is that you're discussing.
Right. We are basically talking about one per school. For Marion Cross, the middle school and the elementary, Ray. So.
John, from your perspective, it's important to have a nurse here every day of the week if we can, is that?
Uh, yeah, I would probably defer it, right? Because he's our.
For Greg.
James is not here.
Okay.
So. And this job doesn't get done.
Yeah.
I also am curious if we've looked, I think we looked at a couple of years ago. Having a nurse float. Because we've compared one of the costs to be taking into consideration the four schools. That we did this and how different is that from just having. Probably it's a great difference. So just having an employee floats between the. Schools. Cause also the other thing that could be helpful for is all of the screenings that we have to do that. The fact that people are going to help us for.
More than ten times as expensive, but, but certainly worth thinking about in the future.
Yeah, that was actually one of the other pieces that we talked about. If this did not. Turn out to be something that worked in terms of getting more nurse subs that we could begin exploring that next.
Um, two questions. Did I hear correctly, Robin, that we, that there is a contracting company that, that offers these services?
Yes, I looked into the contracting company, but we would pay them for a registered nurse seventy two dollars per hour.
Yeah. Um, and then based on sort of what your, your experience and what you know. Um, for that three hundred dollar rate, do we think that we are at that, at that level a- attractive enough to get candidates?
The nurses felt strongly that that would attract candidates. For substitutes.
And are there candidates out there?
Yes, we did have one recently. Over the past couple of months, who did go and meet with one of our nurses. And said she was interested in doing it until she found out how much the pay was. So I know there are some out there potentially.
I'm just be curious if the other school districts that are listed. Are having any better luck with the increased rate of pay, but something to check into.
There was, um, there, there was, uh, a reach out. Um, that the Amy. Our HR human resource, anyhow, she did reach out to many schools and got the rates and everything else. Um, there was a comparison. Again, even at the special one, saying that per diem rate versus which, which the three hundred dollars, um. I've seen it pretty close to this in another district, but this would be a very, very competitive rate. Because most of the schools are not at that rate. It might be, some of the bigger ones might be close to it and stuff like that. Um, but we obviously our region is really. Um, probably one of the main driving factors are. Things of where we're at.
Share something. Just, I think, um, it's really important. Not so much about the time, it's more as a medical emergency.
Yeah.
And or, and we don't have a lot of, we have some kids, but not the serious product issues right now, but if we did have one in our school. Next week coming and moving in or something, that's a big, that's a big liability and most responsibility and. Uh, I think that's what. Or if you just had a little head accident out there. When there's lots of, like, maybe you do have emergency services, but like, not, I wouldn't say that's bad. It is. That's the part, part that I think is most important.
All right. I mean, I think we're, I don't know, I'm assuming on behalf of the board, but I think maybe you give four nod, but it probably makes sense to continue. I don't know. It's worth even like trying to put this out there. And if you're getting a couple of people to come in for the spring, I don't know if it's like worth it, that would cost. I, again, I, I don't know if that even works with budget. I don't spend money we don't have, but. It's not budgeted. Um, and I guess the question would be is to, we put this into next year's budget then maybe? Or is the idea to see if there's a little extra budget and try this for a few days and see if we can attract people?
I, I think we continue this fashion, but. If the total potential. Cost to this for a, a year of six thousand dollars, it might be money well spent.
Yeah, I don't know that you can just hang the carrot out there and bang one. And try to find out if people are interested and then say, well, you know, we don't have the money. Um, that'll definitely. So it would definitely have to be looking to make sure that we're, it's got to be riding light on it.
Jamie, you got it.
Jamie.
Hi, um, I realize I'm only the BA for another twenty something days, but, um. So budgets are very fluid. They're fluid every single year. You build it, you know, nine months ahead of time. So. For sixty eight hundred or sixty three hundred dollars, um, you carry a substitute line. It's a substitute line for all of your subs. And in years where we've gone over in the substitute line, we go over in the substitute line and the surplus coming out of the other lines absorb it. Um. You know, so. I feel the budget could absorb, your budget could probably absorb that. Um, you know, if you want to give it a try. I, I don't know that it's going to attract a lot of bodies because of, again, like Teresa said, where we are. There's so many opportunities to be a nurse sub, either at the hospital, at the nursing homes, at the. There's so many opportunities to be a nurse sub either at the hospital, at the nursing homes, at the assisted living facilities. At the other schools. I mean, it's a critical shortage area. Um, but we can try and then we can adjust the budgets accordingly as you have turnover in staff. And or there are changes in the other lines. And we'll bring you this information at Dresden as well. Um, and that'll be a bigger number because you have more bodies, but, or maybe it'll be a smaller number actually because they have multiple people who can probably usually fill in.
Right, they're able to fill in usually at the high school, so it's not as big an issue there.
Yep, because of the multiple bodies, they split it, split the FTE out. Yep, absolutely. So anyway, just my two cents. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to be wasteful. I was, I guess I was just thinking that if, if, you know, even if we were to. Go forward with half of this or something, you know, basically enable them to fill half the sick days or something for three grand. If we've got the extras, I know. What Jamie said, I guess that's where I was going with this is we always, it seems like we always have flexibility with the budget.
Right.
Even now Jamie's leaving, you're here, we don't have that flexibility. Seems like there's always that little bit of wiggle around, around the edges that are, we're talking a couple, a few thousand, you know, five thousand dollars.
Test it, you would just want to just say, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it.
Correct, but I mean, at the end of the day, we're, we're gonna say that, listen, we're gonna do it, but it's gonna be a max of five or whatever you say is like, hey, I would not like do more than that. Basically our surpluses and stuff, but just say.
And I would say the test, the, the test, if the test fails, we don't spend anything.
Right, correct, so. And then next year, we're ready to put this into the budget or not. If you guys say, but we didn't attract anybody at three hundred bucks a day, well, now we know. I don't know.
Um, I'm not opposed to it, but strictly from a procedural matter, I think um, it was only on for discussion tonight, so I wouldn't wanna. Get um. Pass it, but I'm not opposed. Like, i- i- you know, if we think the need is somewhat urgent, we can call the board back together again prior to a month from now to. To get something approved or just tack it on to the end of a Dresden meeting. Um, but I would also wanna. Have, have some sort of sense that our colleagues on the other side of the river are inclined to go in this same direction. Um, and that they're not suddenly gonna, you know, we decide on three, they decide on four fifty. Um, and now we've got this competition thing going on for folks and, yeah, that's, I, I wanna say we could avoid that.
It seemed like Robin's proposal was for, but perhaps.
Yeah.
You remember, we already have a competition, having talked with people, we, people get taxed from on taxes here and they say they've had people outside. To the bridge and um, at trying to recruit new subs at an event and they said they've had people say, you know, like going through the process and say, oh, Vermont tax, no. Cause if they don't live here, they're not filing Vermont taxes. They don't wanna file it so they can get a sub at low pay. So we're already, even though it looks even, we're not even. And I think there is a difference in the number of subs that come here, so. I think we need to keep that in consideration.
We've been tariffed on head of subs.
Okay. Alright, um, so I think, Robin, do you have enough to go? I think I agree with what, um. Gina, if you agree, I agree with Neil's idea. I think if this seems like it's something really pressing, let us know and if not. You know, we can tack on something or if this is just, I think you've kind of got a net up, head nod from all of us that this does make sense and we're going down the right path and it. It's something that I think if it's. Or we think that if it's necessary, that the numbers should work out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alright, our business requiring action. I think we can, there's no changes here. I think we can have a motion to approve items B through G by consent. That'd be the expenditures minutes. Minutes, yeah, yeah, yes, good motion.
Yeah, to approve items B through G by consent.
Second by. Alright, that is unanimous. Three of us, we had Gina, Garrett and Neil here tonight. Okay, principals report.
Just giving the recording chair.
Mr. Zuckert.
Oh, it's down in the executive session.
Oh, it's down the executive session, you're right. I was gonna skip, I guess I was skipping the.
I think that's gotta be a mistake.
That is a mistake.
I'm gonna pull that up on the agenda.
It's something very serious to talk about.
But I can do the principal report first while I pull that.
Sure, why don't you, why don't you do the principals report?
So I'll go over enrollments. We are up two students this month. Maybe we can have some students come back. That's about the same. I highlighted my reports and professional development that I've done and I'm gonna reiterate what you went through. And I did wanna say, but it didn't make it in here is we've been doing interviews for our physicians. You know, a committee who has met twice now and interviewed a number of candidates and we just believe. About all the candidates we will find this year. I'm excited about options and jobs that will come to the next one. Any questions about the written part in my report?
I love seeing the professional development stuff as someone who does professional development for business people. So that's really great to do that investment.
This report was for you, no?
Yes, I'm screaming my own thoughts of mass.
Excellent. Any other questions for Sean? Alright. Um, actually I'll just do, I, I, why don't we go on to the superintendent's report?
Okay, sure, I, I really already gave it. I, I had planned on reviewing what we discussed at the, our last VSA meeting. Um, and we'll just say again, to, I guess beating dead horse at this point. There's so much happening as Neil mentioned so quickly. It's, it's, I think we all need to collectively keep our eyes on it. Um, I'm fortunate to be part of the Southeast Superintendent's Group and we communicate a lot and we support each other. Um, we interact with our, our respective legislators and so we're doing the best we can, but I think the more that people understand what's happening here. Uh, I made the point at our meeting. That as, as far as a body wielding any kind of influence on the legislative debates, if this all goes through, even at the best case on the consolidation side. There'll be fifteen members of the VSA. Um, instead of fifty two we have now. So our voice will diminish considerably when all this happens. So it's gonna be important for. Our, our public, people who we serve and. And for our teachers especially who do have a, a good, strong association to monitor this stuff and. And speak out, testify when you, when you can and um. And we're really in a battle for public education here. I feel very, very strongly that that's the case. And it's not just here, it's on, it's on the other side of the river as well. Uh, they're, they're, they're learning from the discussions over on our side of the river. Um, and they're, they're putting proposals forward right now in New Hampshire about going to a countywide system where they consolidate down to the county level. So if you can imagine all of Grafton County. Um, administered by a single central office. Lots of, lots to keep, keep an eye on and really. It's, it's not just the funding, it's everything. That's why this, this transformation word's being used. It's, it's really trying to do a lot of. A really, really short period of time, which scares me a little bit.
Alright, thanks Jay, Robin, and do you have, I see there's a, your assistant report?
Yes, I just thought I'd mention a couple of things. We did receive additional funding for our title grants in January. So we made revisions to the grant and that funding was approved this past weekend. And Sean mentioned in his report and I mentioned in mine as well, the professional development, but. You can see the list of other activities we'll be able to do because of that additional funding and that. Um, ended up being over forty thousand dollars for MCS.
Alright. In your last day as guest, so are you actually the principal for the day or were you just shadowing Sean for the day?
Oh, no, I've been principal for the day once a month. It's been great.
I'm sure she says to Robin what her special skill is when she's principal for the day.
Yes, I, every morning I like to start, start the day with a little dance party. I'm famous for that now. Sean's trying to figure out how he can do it, but. No, it's been a lot of fun.
That's a high bar. Alright, well, thank you. Any questions for Robin? No, alright. Theresa, you have, are you doing the business administration report today?
I just say, yeah.
Alright.
Good, Theresa.
I have a couple of things. Um, one, I have, um, I already, we've uploaded the documents. Um, the final report, the auditor's report is uploaded. Um, we also have, and I'll give these to you afterwards, but I have the um, teachers collective bargaining agreement that needs to be signed. Also have the um, draft version of support staff, um, that I believe Neil, you're just. The only person that needs to sign that particular one. And then um, then we also have. Financial projected for, for. What I'll do is I'll highlight you of. I don't know if I should bring this up on screen and you guys already have it on screen, the financial report, the debt and surplus.
Good.
Yeah.
It's in the, um.
Yes.
Yeah. Exactly, so it's there, yeah.
Um. So basically what I'll do is highlight, um, like under the Norwich报道news, um, at this time. We're looking like we're gonna be a little short on the news in regards to extraordinary um, needs, those particular bonds and that's. Primarily due to, I believe we have a student that left or something, so that. You hold on that.
Yeah.
Which um, will decrease what we may have anticipated. Um, under the expenditures. Under the eleven hundred function, the regular instructional programming. Um, at this time, we're looking at what looks to be a large surplus of a hundred and twenty nine thousand. Um, that's primarily due to vacancies that we have on filled positions, so um. We always hope to fill them at any given moment. The next thing I'll just kind of point out is that the special education programming line. Kind of going in the opposite direction. Um, and that's due primarily to some medical changes and plans and transition. Um, the personnel and stuff. And then. See the guidance programming, twenty one twenty is the code. And again, twenty four thousand eight seventy one a little. And that particular savings at this moment is just due to um. An anticipated medical insurance and um, we didn't, the person didn't have it. Alright, no more before and all but.
Yeah.
Um, we got staff development. Back to the line twenty two thirteen. Um, right now. That was kind of moving fluid. We still anticipate that it'll probably be used up because of a lot of professional development that's happening now here in the spring again. We have twenty four ten, school administration, principal of office. Um, right now that one's over, but that's primarily based on a lot of um, HRA claims. So actual claims that are paid out and so that one has been a little higher than anticipated this year.
Theresa, for the um, avenue challenge, what is the HRA claim?
Um. What is the, what is the HRA claim?
Yeah, what is that saying, HRA?
See, the, the HRA is the, your savings, the health.
Oh, health, higher medical.
Reunivers, yeah.
Or reverse money, yeah, thank you.
Help twenty in the book.
Yeah.
And it's usually like the way we're set up, where certain deductions are, the deductions are paid. Many employees have that two thousand dollars or a thousand or something, so um, that is banked and then that would pay for the employee.
Thank you.
And then, a studio services, that one's still running with a little bit of a surplus that, that wants to get is just due to vacancies. And then down below the bottom, we have debt service. Um, the new, uh. Did I say that? Sorry, the playground anyhow, that particular loan. When it was written, that loan was written at bank, we usually have about a year before we start paying. But in this particular case, they didn't do that, so we did not budget for the particular, because this particular year. So that just kind of ran us in the red in that sense because the loan started immediately. Um, and when we ended FY twenty three, our fund balance at that time was a hundred and ninety eight, twelve dollars that rolled forward. After our FY twenty three audit was done, it was just a minor adjustment of about seventeen thousand preclassification of an expenditure, so. So they brought up our fund balance at that point to two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirty three dollars. Then at the bottom of the report, if you're looking, you'll see that the revenue variance was thirty one thousand, two hundred and ninety seven. Our fund balance variance that I just spoke about, seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty one dollars. And then our expenditure variance at this given time, and again, our spending, our conferences for the expenditures right now. Um, the base on first orders already put in place and so again, some could. Um. In the end, obviously this number could be decreased or, or increased just a little bit, you know, and then. And then our unassigned fund balance at this one moment, looking at hundred and fifty five thousand, seven hundred and nine.
Sure.
No questions, anything? Do you have any questions?
No, that's helpful. Super good, good position for all of it. Are any questions for Theresa? Yeah, alright, thank you very much. That was great. Okay, um, yeah, I don't really have too much to prepare for a chair report. Um, I think everyone's often running on their committees now. I know Gina's sitting in the spec committee. Um, Neil's been doing the tuition committee that kind of got often running even before the committees were assigned. We did policy. Um, and hopefully it's okay, Jay, just gonna take some more time. We, Jay had mentioned a couple of months ago now about your resignation. Which we put in in March, so um, all of us on the SAU level are starting to put the wheels in motion as far as what the next steps are there, so that's. Unfortunately causing everyone a lot of angst. We. You're all set, thought Jay would be here for the next ten years, but he is not. All kidding, we knew this was coming at some point, so um, that's been some work as well for. Good going on behind the scenes. Um, I think that's. And now like I said, obviously we'll be keeping a hold of the north side and again, I, it is nice to come to his means and read the principals report. Know that everything at the school at least is going on as it should and a, and a, a good place for all of our kids to be, so. Um, that's uh, as I drive by in the mornings and see all the kids running around outside and then listening to NPR, it's awfully nice to have those two things going on. Totally oblivious. Um, alright, anything, let me see here. I think that is all we have for reports, am I correct? Yes, 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 okay. Um, I think at this point. Our meeting is essentially over. We will come back out to approve the nomination list, um, but at this point, we are ready to enter into executive session. So I have a motion to enter into executive session if language is there.
Move to enter into, I move to enter into executive session at eight oh three PM in accordance with title one, section three thirteen. For the purpose of discussing.
It'll be personnel.
Personnel.
Correct.
So that's. Premature general public knowledge, clearly disadvantaged public body or personal knowledge for that one.
Yes, sorry, um. Yeah, I think we just say personally.
Personal.
Or to discuss you personally? Uh, sure, we're doing the MO as well, but.
Yeah.
That's just, yeah, it was just, uh, personal, yeah.
Personal.
It's all personnel. Okay, I do have a second?
Second.
You know, all this is a favor.
Two names.
Okay. Alright, thank you everyone for attending. If you are just. Okay, um. Alright, return to public session. And we have here eight forty. Be back on Zoom, okay, everything's good? Okay. Get back on Zoom, okay, everything's good, okay? Um, I have a motion to approve the nomination list as presented and amended.
Yes, I moved to approve the FY twenty-six nomination list as presented and corrected, if you.
Second.
I didn't.
All right, all is in favor? All right, that is unanimous. Okay, and any agenda talks for next meeting, I've got a couple of them, including, like I said, the main ones were Beck and Jim and or Jim, um, and of course, uh. Another update on our funding, stay low, and any other topics, please get them to me, um, do I have a motion to, the next meeting is Wednesday, May seventh, first Monday, what? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Gina has.
I need your.
Oh, no.
Should we do a poll call?
No. Yes.
Uh, hands is fine. I haven't had to think about Vermont. That would be long in a while.
All right, Gina's motion to adjourn, all is in favor. That is unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.